Okay, my name is Paul Tagliferi. I'm the Chair of the ZBA of Northborough. It is September 27, 2022 and it passed the hour of 7:00 PM. This open meeting of the ZBA is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending COVID, certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on July 16, 2022. All members of the ZBA are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the ZBA members to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise.
If you can hear me, sorry.
Yes. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda using the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the lives from this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Members, when I call your name, can you please respond in the affirmative? Fran Backstrom.
Here.
Brad Blanchett.
Here.
Suzie Sizlicka.
Here.
Jeff Leel.
Here.
And Mark Rutan. Who I think, I think just lost connection again. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors.
Here.
Robert Federico.
Yeah.
Michelle Sealy.
Here.
Okay. I guess we can, we can start, you know, I kind of wanted to call this meeting. It's been a couple of months since we've actually last met. And, you know, just kind of wanted to sort of approve some minutes and then just talk about some items that are sort of open for upcoming meetings or sort of things that we were looking ahead towards the calendar year now that we're sort of into September, in the fall and everything else. So first thing on the agenda is just a consideration of the minutes from the June 28, 22, 2022 meeting. I think those minutes have been sent out earlier. I don't know if anyone had any objections or comments about that, but I would welcome the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I move that we accept the minutes from the June 28, 2022 meeting as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I think, I think Brad got the second there. Fran made a motion. Brad.
Hi.
Fran.
Hi.
Suzie.
Hi.
And I guess we can go with Jeff.
Hi.
All right, and I am an I as well. Okay. I don't know, I have not heard from Mark at all. Where do I see him?
I, I sent him an email letting him know to reach out to me if he's having any issues connecting.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is just, you know, format for future meetings. I think, you know, obviously with the, the laws that have been passed this past year extending sort of the COVID, you know, state of emergency and stuff like that, and allowing us to meet sort of in a remote fashion. I kind of wanted to just kind of get it out in front of everything. I think these things expire, Lori, quick, from around March of 23.
That is correct. Yes.
Right, okay. And so I just want to kind of let the board know that I have asked Mitch or through Lori, sort of the Board of Selectmen, about the possibility of remote meetings if we are forced to sort of have some sort of meeting in person. But, you know, I did want to get sort of people's thoughts and opinions, one way or the other, about sort of meeting in person in the future. So I don't know if anyone, any opinions about whether they wanted to stay hybrid or stay remote, or they were comfortable meeting in person, but just kind of wanted to get it out there. Lori, I think you had your hand up.
Paul, yeah, I did want to speak to the fact that right now the town has not yet made the financial investment into the hybrid model. So hybrid is not a possibility at this point, so it can either be 100% in person or 100% remote. So there isn't currently the option of doing a hybrid model. The town manager did tell me that there is a grant that's coming out. So he intends to apply for the grant to help defray the cost of outfitting the selectmen's meeting room for the hybrid model. His intention isn't to make the investment at this particular time. It'll be at some point in the future, preferably with grant funds.
Okay. So I guess then my question is, has there been any discussion at the state level of extending these the ability for us to do remote meetings? And are, you know, would we be forced to sort of meet in person come, say, April?
It's, it's my understanding that the intent is to continue with a hybrid model. But of course, at this point, it's an unfunded mandate. So the town manager would prefer to wait until the funding becomes available from the state through a grant program.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, I haven't watched the Board of Selectmen meeting. Are they still meeting remotely or have they gone back to in-person meeting?
They are still meeting remotely. There are very few committees that are meeting 100% in person. As far as I understand, it's at the Sewer Committee and the Water Committee are meeting in person, but pretty much everybody else is meeting remote. I do have a Community Preservation Committee meeting coming up next week, which is going to be in person. But the big boards are still meeting remote. Excuse me.
Okay. I don't know if anyone else has any opinions or thoughts, Fran?
I always have an opinion. So, so a couple of things. My understanding is that the state, I thought the state was giving us to December of 23 to either develop a hybrid model that allows for both in-person and remote, or we have to then go back to fully in-person, but I don't, maybe it was March, but I thought it was December. I think the problem with our meeting going fully in-person is that all of our meetings are public hearings. And so the participation that is available, either remote or hybrid, is just higher and more inclusive. So if we can't do hybrid, as much as I would like, I mean, I guess my preference would be if, I mean, I guess there's no purpose in the five of us or the six or seven of us to be physically together in a room if all of our interaction with the public and the applicants has to be on Zoom, right? So I think until we can actually do a hybrid where people can participate equally both in-person and remotely, we serve, we serve the purpose better remote, as much as I hate it, but I do think it is a better way of handling things.
Okay. Suzie.
I, I agree with Fran. I worry, I, I've been going on masked places. I, Community Affairs Committee, we meet in person, but it's, it's easier for us to brainstorm for events and activities in person, sitting around a large table in the library. But I can see like if, if a neighbor or somebody in the public wants to come to the public hearing and not feeling comfortable, I mean, even if we were masked in person, if we voluntarily did that for the public safety, for our own safety this winter, I'd hate to think that somebody wouldn't come because of that. So I agree with Fran on that. As much as I would love to be with all of you in a room, I think I've met almost everybody in person, but not quite. I still haven't met Jeff in person or Mark.
Okay, thank you. Mark, yes.
I have to disagree. I tend to like the in-person just because of the large format documents that have been brought before us, where you can go up, examine it closely. We're all on to put it proverbially on the same page. And I just feel that there's an advantage there in the interaction with the applicants and their documents, and they can pull things out usually much more readily than I can see it on my screen here. Just that's it.
Okay. Jeff.
I'll chime in. I, I'm in, I'm in Mark's camp. I, I recognize that there's some inclusivity to have, be able to have more people come here. It's certainly far more convenient to do this by Zoom. So I like that, but every other place other than town meetings and a couple charities I have are 100% in-person and have been for a while. And I think that, I certainly am happy to do this, but as soon as we can get to hybrid or be in-person, I think we should do that.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Yeah, I mean, I really just wanted to have this as an agenda item, mainly for the purpose of sort of getting it on people's radar. I think for the foreseeable future, at least for the next couple of meetings that we could potentially have in the fall and even early spring, I, I think doing a remote Zoom meeting is probably what we're going to go with. But I definitely wanted to ask the question in regards to, you know, how long will we be able to sort of meet in person per state law, right? And then, you know, I guess the other thing is for staff, I think, generally speaking, to summarize what our board's opinion is, I think the hybrid model is ideally the best way to do it. Because you get a little bit of both, meeting in person in addition to having the, you know, participation from the public or whoever may want to participate. And so I guess the feedback that we can have to, you know, the town administrator, the board selectman, is that we would prefer to have the ability to do a hybrid sort of meeting going forward. So that's kind of what I was, what I was looking for there, but appreciate everyone's opinion on this. Okay, does anyone else have anything for, on that one? All right, so the next.
Yes. Didn't say anything. I'm kind of like right down the middle. I see the pros and cons of both. I mean, it's really difficult. And like you said, I think hybrid's the most ideal. Because I agree with what Mark and Jeff are saying, that we can all get on the same page and look at, the presentations, the designs as a, as a group. But at the same time, hearing other people say, well, I can't attend the meeting in person. It's just easier for them to get online at home. Now, that's, that's positive as well. So I think the hybrid's just the best way to go.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is, you know, just, you know, I wanted to sort of solicit some feedback from you guys on just sort of the, the joint meeting that we've had with the planning board. So the last couple of years, you know, we've typically met with the planning board, sort of discussed their bylaws and what they were thinking about and sort of just brainstorm about different activities. You know, I think what I was looking for with this is, you know, obviously the planning board, I believe, you know, starts their, you know, discussion early on of what they are thinking about for 2023 bylaw amendments or adjustments, you know, in the fall and then sort of proceeds on throughout the course of the year with public input, early, you know, spring, late winter, then writing the things and sort of coming to town meeting. And so, you know, I think we should continue, you know, interacting with the planning board and being involved in sort of their process of coming up with zoning amendments or new bylaws. But really what I would like to, to get feedback on is that, you know, at what point do we think as a board, we would add the most sort of impact, right, in sort of that process, right? I mean, you know, if we think about how they developed these bylaws, you know, they start now sort of high-level brainstorming about the bylaws. Do we want to be involved here? Say, a meeting in October and November? Or are we thinking sort of January, February, once sort of they've formulated a, you know, a a plan or some sort of an outline of what they're thinking of, right? And so at what point in their process do we want to sort of be involved with having a meeting with the planning board? So Lori, I see you have your hand raised? Yep.
Yes. I'm gonna excuse myself in advance. I have a cough. I'm trying to keep it under wraps, but I, I thought it might be beneficial for me to tell you some of the things that we've been talking about, what I've been talking about with the planning board as far as zoning changes are concerned. So at least you'd have a little bit of a heads up. So one of the first changes that we are proposing had to do with site plan review. So we wanted to do some clarification in Section 7 dash 03 dash 050 Site Plans subsection A, subsection two. So we wanted to specify that special permit with site plan review only applies to uses that are identified as special permit uses in the Table of Uses. So if it is a special permit by the flood plain bylaw or the groundwater protection overlay bylaw, but it isn't, it's considered a by right use in the Table of Uses. It would be, not be subject to the approval authority of special permit with site plan review. So that actually was something that came out in a couple of appeals. And so it really became apparent that this is some language that needed to be clarified. And of course, I'm a newbie. So it was something that I was confused about as well. And so that's one of our priority zoning changes. Another zoning change is in zoning bylaw section 7 dash 09 dash 020 Site Design Standard C. So this is subsection six. The idea is to have telephone cable and electrical services be installed underground with, within conduit under Article 37 zoning bylaw 167 Main Street. So this is the White Cliffs Mansion. So the idea is to rezone that property right now. A portion of the property is within the residential C district and the balance of the property is within the business east district. But the building itself is within residency, which essentially says that pretty much, other than some institutional uses, the only thing you can do is single-family home. In order to make the reuse of that building more feasible, we thought that it would be important to rezone the entire property as business east. So there are a variety of commercial and high-density residential uses that it would be allowed within business east, for example, assisted living and artist loft that currently are not allowed, as well as offices and hospitality uses, restaurants and the like. Another issue that's become apparent, and I'm sure you recall, we have an appeal related to the groundwater protection overlay district and the definition of or the explanation as to whether you have a portion located in one area versus the other and what that means. What is the minimum lot size and does the entirety of the minimum lot size have to be in one area versus the other? So we discussed clarifying the language, so it is very clear to everybody what the expectation is. We discussed creating a multifamily overlay district, although this bylaw might not be ready for the spring 2023 town meeting. It might be the following year. We are obligated under the changes to Chapter 48 to adopt a multifamily over, a multifamily district that allows a density of 15 units per acre. So we've been talking about how that would happen. And then there were a couple of other things having to do with the groundwater protection overlay district. I know one of the planning board members had mentioned a desire to eliminate the groundwater advisory committee. Although that's not something that I have specifically been working on. I believe that's one of my planning board members who's working on that language. So that's pretty much what we have at this point.
Do you know?
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Um, do you know what they're coming up with as far as the two different overlay districts as far as how they're going to structure that? As far as how much land is in which one?
So the multifamily overlay district, so there's only one overlay district.
Oh, no, I was going to go from one before that, when it's in groundwater district two versus three where we have that situation.
Oh, so that would just be clarifying the minimum lot area requirement. So right now it's kind of confusing. It doesn't specifically articulate what will happen if you have a proposed use that's partly in one district and partly in another district. And then what I mean, I, I should specify that as saying area.
Yeah.
A part in area one and a part of area two.
We have a place where we have heard this. So we're fairly familiar with this.
So it doesn't specifically say what's going to happen. So we haven't written the article yet.
Okay.
And by we, I mean me. So I wanted to really sit down with Bob Federico and Fred Litchfield to understand how it's been articulated in the past and come up with the language that makes sense. And then, of course, you folks are really important to the interpretation of that article. So I would be happy to put that language that we come up with before you and get your feedback. Because I want to make sure that everybody is on the same page with that, that new language.
Okay. Fran, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, so that was the big, the, the broad overview, which, so my thought is, I mean, watching the planning board go through multiple iterations of a bylaw before it's ready for town meeting. I'd like to see them do some of the groundwork and then us come in before the ink is dry, but not necessarily too early, because they have, it has to, it's, it's like an evolution. They, they work at a concept and then work their way to the actual language. But I definitely think we should have input, not feedback, which to me are two different things. But I'd like them to work on some specifics before we engage in the process. And I would definitely like that meeting to be in-person, because it's, it's very difficult for all of us to do it virtual, and it would not be, it would be an open meeting, but not with public comment.
Okay, thank you, Fran. I think in the past, I think we sort of have done it in like the January, February-ish timeframe. I don't know if that, that was, if that, if you thought that was too late or too early, but I mean, it was, it was kind of, we, we had it written. We sort of had the idea on how many or sort of summarized summary of what they were looking to do, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, I mean, it, it changed multiple times after that. It changed multiple times after the public hearing. So hopefully with Lori's guidance, they'll be, you know, able to stay, you know, on a, on a better schedule and that we could then have input before the public hearing, but definitely with a more finished product than we had the last time.
My goal for the public hearing is to have it by the second meeting in January. So I don't like the public hearing to be so close to the town meeting article, because I don't, my absolute worst nightmare is to make changes on the town meeting floor. I do not want that to happen, so I want the final version of the Warren articles to go in print. So I'd prefer to start earlier with the public hearing, so that there is pretty much no chance that we're going to be changing articles on the town meeting floor.
Does any other board members have any thoughts, feedback on sort of meeting with the planning board? Jeff?
So I think as a follow-up to Fran, are we giving our input on how we would interpret the language that they're creating? As opposed, since we're supposed to decide appeals, variances, special permits, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what our role would be, like I did the last couple of times that we had that. Are we speaking as citizens? Are we speaking as the board? That's what I'm confused, and what our role would be in being involved in it.
I, I guess, I mean, I, I definitely would like, well, I should say, my own opinion on this is that I don't feel like we should ever be voting on what the planning board is deciding to do as a board. We're all citizens of the town. We can all go to town meeting and express our own personal opinion. What I would, what I would like to see, I guess, in the meeting with the planning board is as people who are involved with the town, who have heard many cases, who have seen sort of pitfalls or things that we may want to adjust or change, and you have the experience that this board, I believe, does have, sort of provide sort of that input to the planning board as they sort of come up with these zoning amendments, right? Whatever they may be. We're not going to say, I want to have this zoning amendment go in front of, you know, town meeting, because that's not what our role is. But given sort of an outline and what Lori had this, you know, sort of given the framework of, say, okay, this is the feedback that we would have potentially on what, what you're sort of thinking of, and then sort of step away, and then that's it. And so the part of the process that, at least for me personally, I think is more earlier on with some sort of framework on where they are going, right? So that as they're thinking about things, they're sort of getting information from a bunch of different parties, and we're one of those parties. Right? And then they can go do and finish and polish based on whatever feedback they have, right? Then they can go to the public, and if there's other opinions, you know, we, by that point, we have stepped away as a board. Of course, you can go there as, as a member of town, but, you know, we have provided our own expertise and experience that we have as a board to them early enough in that process. That's how I sort of viewed it, but.
In that, in that way, I'm supportive of it, and I agree, doing it earlier makes a lot of sense.
Okay. So then I think, yeah, Suzie.
My, when I was sitting here thinking, I was wondering when, if you wanted us to come in before or after the public? Because I wasn't sure how much the public would shape what direction it was going in, because some of these are more not, they're more dry topics. So if it would be beneficial for us to come in before, because we have that knowledge, or after, if something's going to change, to be like, oh, that's not going to work. You know, this is how we've handled it in the past, sort of thing. I do like that Lori is meeting with Bob and Fred. I think that's a great idea. And I do like the idea of it being like an in-person meeting, because Zoom is, it's a headache once you get so many participants and the raising of the hand, that's half the meeting from what I remember. But I, I would love to meet with them. I think it's a great idea. And the raising of the hand, that's half the meeting, um, from what I remember, but I I would love to meet with them. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other board members have any?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Yeah, so I I I I kind of, I do agree with um what Fran said and Jeff said. So you said I'd like to meet before public hearing, uh, like, like Fran, look, how you said input, not feedback. Um, I think. So probably like maybe a January meeting with them in person for sure. And then, you know, we don't, we're not going to come in and do the proofreading and cleaning up stuff, like we're going to have a little more. The input of of the way it's actually written, not after the fact that it's been written and we just need to change words here and there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, so I I guess then. Lori, we we can probably, we can maybe discuss it our next meeting, but um, you know, I guess based on your. Workflow, wh- whatever your framework is going to be for the planning board, you could just kind of let us know what that is in terms of what, you know, if you're expecting the. Public hearings to be in January, then maybe our meeting is more like the November, December timeframe, right? You know, be before sort of it gets to that point. Um, so I mean, I guess I'll I'll leave it up to you to sort of, you know, speak with the planning board and just kind of let them know what our opinions are in terms of. You know, trying to be part of the process, their process and coming up with the bylaws, you know, in terms of providing some input there. Um, and then, you know, in terms of scheduling meetings and stuff like that, I think an in-person meeting is preferable. Um, gi- given the fact that, you know, it it would just be us, our boards discussing with each other as opposed to having public participation. Um, and then, you know, any sort of um outline or written summary of. Where they are in terms of what they're thinking about for the bylaw changes would be uh, would be appreciated as well.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to provide that.
Okay.
Variance isn't coming up again this year. Can rest for one year, I guess, right?
I didn't hear what you said, Brad, sorry.
I'm like, I'm just happy that uh use variance isn't coming up again. For one year at least.
Okay, um, so a- anyone has anything else on that? Um, so next meeting is October twenty-fifth. Uh, Lori, do do we have any cases for that?
Okay. Yes, we do have, uh, we have received one application for the meeting in October. Um, it is a variance application, so it should be an interesting one.
Okay, great. Um, so I guess then we'll plan to meet uh next October twenty-fifth uh at seven P M. Um, if anyone has anything else, um, any other business? Nope, okay.
Mr. Chair, I motioned that we adjourn.
A second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Uh, Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Mark? Was I mute? Mark is an I and I'm an I as well.